In progress.
Chairman, make motion to exit executive session at this time and resume regular session.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi?
Yes. It is now ten AM. We are going to enter into the San Francisco County Commissioners on this Tuesday of October 13, 2023, into a public hearing, so we're calling this meeting to order. The first application that we're going to be hearing is application VR 2023-005 by General Renting, requesting that a portion of county vote, 69.4 approximately 50 feet wide and 340 feet in length be vetted. The location is 985 San Pedro, with the legal description of section 36, township 33, range 64, part of the west, to northwest, or notification will not change the zoning. So, after receiving legal advice, the Port County Commissioners found that the notification that was sent out was insufficient under the state statute. So, however, the hearing will be continued, and we are planning on having this hearing November 7, so we can do the proper notification to all the adjacent property owners in the proper manner, in the proper language, and the proper statute. So Commissioners, at this time, if there are no questions, I am going to ask for a motion to continue this hearing to this hearing to November 7.
So, good. Second motion. Commissioner Luis Lopez? Yes. Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi?
Yes. So, this particular hearing, it is now closed. We are going to now, under the same part of the agenda, it is Tuesday, October 30, 2023, it is 10:01, we are going to be opening up the next public hearing to amend the application of HUP 2023-002 by the San Francisco County, seeking approval to establish a proper cemetery. The proper cemetery is utilized as a common grave for the burial of unknown, unplanned, or indigenous individuals. The proposed location is a five acre parcel, part of the northwest, northwest, northwest of section 24, township 31, range 61, west of the 60 yard. The proposed special permit will not change the zoning, but it granted to allow the non-implanted use to shoot the zoning, not otherwise about the other special use permit. So at this time, I'm going to call Mr. Bob Lucero. And for the purposes of this hearing, Mr. Lucero, any information that is given to you has to be your main to the subject, and at the point at this time that the subject is deviated, the chairman of the board will bring that conversation back to the proper subject. So, without further ado, would you please raise your right hand?
You saw the Department of County District just when you got to give the industry culture of the county by the street.
Yes.
You see, they have a position.
Robert Lucero. Very proud of the man. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, this amended application, the original application before you was settled Mexico, for the proper cemetery, in the property. We did have some concern, not the owner of the property, as to the location. So, we were kind, and we decided we can try to move a little bit, so which we did. We sent up, having the certified background again, to three property owners, two of them were the same ones that had objected to it before, never any on the location, along with their property owner, and there's been any objection now. This was moved up towards a corner area. And the county commissioners did recommend approval, whether Mr. Trump either was one of the county commissioners, he would also, the only he would recommend it was, that he asked if the cemetery is only fenced, which I can say yes, and as far as maintained, and I told him, and he just requested that the board consider doing some maintenance on it for tons of years, just out of respect for the deceased, and somebody who wants to do that. Thank you so much. Mr. Lucero, what is the question I got, and thank you for the information you submitted to the board. It is on a corner of the property. How far is the proximity to a county vote?
It will be on the corner of county vote 48 and county vote 105.
Thank you. I saw that, and I just wanted to add for the record that there is not going to be a disturbance of cleaning in a sense in the middle of the road. And the noxious weed program that we have within the county, since this is not going to be part of the responsibility of the county, will mostly have to go to this piece of property.
Yeah, and it will, and in that area, that's a one scenario, people fighting the African movement in that area, there's also some Russian Jew in that area, so we're probably need to take a look at it every year, monitor, and maybe spread it.
Well, one last question I got, and first of all, thank you for the work, but this is one of those things that we need, we have to definitely to have, to extend those services to individuals that do not have significant owners, to carefully in the very stages, and so that we have a place in the rest of the nation. Thank you for that. But my question related to that, the fencing, do we have any plan when that's going to happen? Because I would imagine that we have to fence it before we begin, they use it for the same.
Yeah, I guess that would be up to, I guess, the rolling bridge, once the purchase of the property or whatever. And then I think that the surveyors are going to be part of it.
Couple of questions for Mr. Murphy. Would you like to raise your right hand to support him?
So, the Department of County District just when you got to give the industry culture of the county.
Are you? Phil Murphy, yes, Commissioner.
Yes, so you know, for the purposes of my only question, probably not with the question I have from Mr. Lucero, the fencing and also I would, and I don't know what you think, but you know, I yield my call to Commissioners, but I think a gate would be also not necessarily to keep a block, to keep any, any stock from moving there, any, any, any kind of damage to the property, so we can conserve, any integrity and dignity of that mess.
My thoughts are that most of the problem is transfer, how the transfer takes place, and then fence it. And we will have access, and we'll probably have a 105, considering the rest of the 48. And also, my thoughts are minimal disturbance in that location, so that noxious weeds, et cetera, shouldn't be too much of a problem for us. Yeah, my thoughts are just lay out a plan, how we want to proceed with the burials, et cetera, and the rolling stacks, et cetera, besides, and then for that, there's minimal disturbance to the, to the, um...
I'd try an opportunity to visit the county coroner and inform them of this back in the coming course of days, so I think he's certainly one of the individuals asking requesting help on this particular perspective. So, thank you so much, Commissioners, any questions for the county?
Sure. For our, our funds being sufficient, or we have to put in? Uh, for where, these wires, the stairs? And what else, just thoughts for the vehicles, that we need an access to, and make sure that we have a turnout accessibility for, whether it be the criminal home, or the coroner's office, you know, access to, to enter and exit. It's a good one, we may have to reassess the gate, back into the proper system.
Anyone that made any other questions?
It's just a long time coming, to see this government provision, and then if you would like to speak, I don't know if you signed up.
For the public hearing, I didn't know I needed to sign for the public.
Yes, please go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Murphy, this time, as you're about to testify, you are about to give, will be on the sworn testimonies, as you raise, yes, your right hand.
So, the Department of County District just when you got to give the industry culture of the county.
Just a question, in reading this, it says a proper cemetery is utilized, maybe it's just a graveyard as a common grave, but for a unknown, unplanned, indigenous, so maybe they're referring wordwise, this cemetery is being common grave, but there's been an issue recently, each individual is going to have a separate grave, because the way I'm reading it, it's one, one mass grave.
No, and then, Robert, thank you so much for that question, and the property is five acres, with basically giving that dignity to have their very own space, or in the course that we have done with the county, my understanding would be that the county is going to be giving that close graves in a very, very welcoming fashion, but yet it's not going to be a massive lineup, Mr. Murphy, it'll be, uh...
So, with my experiences too, I would urge the county at this time, to establish the coroner's office, when there are bodies that are unknown, unplanned, to, to take DNA ahead of time, and, and keep the record of that somewhere, so that they don't have to exhume the body, and, and then, and then do DNA again, which has happened, so you might want a procedure in place.
In your expertise, is that not a state statute now?
Not later on. I don't know if it is.
We'll double check, Commissioner Moore, and I'm repartee. But I have more than some continuing issues.
I, I had a case years ago, where buried someone for the coroner's office, and with John Smith, and then, and we put him in a place, and the county did a grave, and we put plastic down, just in case we looked at, for a person back up. I was contacted 10, 11 months later, by, by a family saying that it was their relative, and, and they didn't exhume the body, and, and take it back, but there should be a procedure in place, you know, that, that we're not putting people on the ground without having to exhume them again to get DNA, because with the science and everything that we have, it's more than likely that in time we're going to find out, and the, that should probably be turned out, you know, saying to the coroner that if we're going to have procedures in place, that you are going to maintain, you know, error that is done, and so that people, you know, find their loved ones, because people are searching, there's a website out there where people can search for their relatives and that's happening.
Thanks for being here, and your insight is very beneficial.
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for anyone, individuals that have specified in order to debate, otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi? Yes, and once again, as has been said so many times, thank you, and work hard, work, and, 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 you know, all this process, so at this time, we are now closing this public hearing. And I will entertain a motion to enter into now, via regular voting issues, you to finish our hearing. Someone?
Second. Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucero.
Ninety, consideration of county court judge bench order number one, is it there again?
Commissioners, before you create a consideration, it is, right, the county court judge bench order number one. This came about, the deadline, judicial deadline, on the 18th, for a consultant, or architectural firm consultant, on September 15. It's been a process, with, whether the state judicial folks, to try and come up with, well, the reasonable remodel of that county court. Judges bench, and all the ancillary things, and it's, it's gone on longer than what we had just made, decisions frankly weren't made, final decisions weren't frankly made, for our grant application, and the finance director probably just submitted until one day, two days before the deadline, so I'd ask the board to approve this change order, to extend this deadline to November. We've already got the estimate in from the architect, which is all we needed by September 15, and we'll now approve until we work on the plans, once the, once we find out that we're going to want the grant, to proceed with the remodel of the county court.
And thank you, I see there is not going to be any adjustment to the contract's initial price, which is, we're just extending the deadline.
And he did approach me prior to, he did, the owner of Alpha Design, the architectural firm, engaged with, he did approach me prior to September 15, the office, while I'm standing there, so I'd ask him to, if that is a motion.
So, that's that he signed, and who's going to go to the bill? Pardon me, that's that he signed and billed?
He has offered to assist us with the bill, but his contract is for the design of, at this point.
Do you have any contractors waiting to go for the bill?
We have to receive funding first, frankly, we need to admit to state, be sure that what, their last proposal is what they want to build, that has been a, it's been a ping pong contest, back and forth, this is why, they want, you know, I think we've done it very well. So, get that in place first, and get the design, the bid documents, and then we'll get it, sure.
I have myself a question here, just to go there, officials, can this be built away and transported back in the setting base, or is it going to have to be built on site?
It'll have to be built on site for the most part, because we'd have to make it ADA compliant, so it'll eventually have to be built, and then the land, so it should, it should, you know, so it's, uh...
Well, it's been, uh, follows through my next question, and if that happens, to be built on site, are we going to be putting the courts into canceling some of their, or do they have any space for company, or the destruction is going on?
Mr. Crime, the court administrator has some ideas on how to accommodate county court to accommodate the laws, and, uh, can't hear some, they're moving back the DA's area that he thought he could use, and also, Commissioner, Commissioner, I don't want to speak for him, he's already moved that over, so that's, you know.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any other questions on that? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consideration of county court judge's bench change order number one.
Second.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi? Yes. Ninety, consideration of diesel fuel pay, place to order again.
Commissioner, before you create a consideration, there's a, there's a diesel field to our fairgrounds facility, following results, 7,200 gallons, excuse me, approximately 7,200 gallons of diesel we've had, okay, raw fuel, um, the diet is 3.7112, the carbon petroleum 3.66256 per gallon, Monah Valley 3.65 per gallon, universal a little bit, Lawson a little bit, I'd ask the board to approve Monah Valley's bid of 3.65 dollars per gallon, when exceeded by 26,000, to not be involved.
Sir? Comments, questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Would they approve the distance to a bid in order to Monah Valley, or, or, or 26,307, you know, 26,281?
Second motion. Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi? Yes. Ninety, consideration of unmeted fuel bill, Mr. Murphy.
Commissioner, we also, uh, switch some bids for the delivery of approximately 1,000 gallons of unmeted, we ask them to our fairgrounds facility, following results, raw fuel 2.936 dollars per, three, excuse me, 2.9368 dollars per gallon, acorn petroleum 2.86045 dollars per gallon, Monah Valley 2.92 dollars per gallon, I'd ask the board to approve acorn petroleum's bid of 2.86045 dollars per gallon, when exceeded by 22,883 dollars sixty-six.
Thank you, sir. Questions, or less, motions, or, or should you approve them, that we feel they're taking for petroleum, exceeded by 22,881? Second motion. Commissioner Hesse?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizzi? Yes. Uh, we have to, very, second portion of this meeting, uh, presentation of 2024 proposed budgets for fiscal year 24, so, uh, my, uh, finance director, I hope, we thank you for all the work that you did, is, uh, putting two proposals together, uh, thank you for all the work, and the information that we have in front of us.
So... Any?
Yes.
We have two budgets, um, I sent you a cheat sheet on, on the budget, so you can see... Okay, so you can see my little, little, send to each budget's little cheat sheet for you, um, you can see the, our property tax yield, that means 9.357, so just a normal proposed budget, if proposition A change that fails, our property tax will be forthcoming knowing, if it actually passes, our property tax will be forthcoming, so there's a difference of 92,000 that the county will actually lose, with the proposition A change. Um, within this budget, we are looking at the A check, and we have, um, well, let's see, we have underfunded, we have DOL, and we have a match, that's a recent tilt, can allocate this 5.7 million dollar object for our A check. The clerk reporter right now, she has two part-time employees, we're going to actually, in the budget, we're going to take the two full-time employees for her, assessor, um, if, if proposition A should fail, we're going to need one full-time employee, if it actually passes, we're going to need one full-time and one part-time, the other part-time will be part of the treasurer, but Jody, what should we have, with that, the assessor's office, and I spoke to her, she does most of the data, to where she's the priority of it, but if the treasurer doesn't need another employee, and one part-time, go to the treasurer's office, and Jody doesn't need that, they get fees, I mean, they get taxes. Um, the extension, we kept the 20, for our 21 employee, that's okay, we had any, district attorney has requested 1.1 million for this budget, the health department has an increase of 2,384,000, she's asking for an increase, for the health department, as in all projects. Um, we have many projects that we're looking at for 2024, the airport, you know, we have FAB, that we're going to do, we've got 800 of the taxiway, we have that, we have, you use some of our 7210, the tile floor, and others, those are projects we want to look at, at the airport. Capital expenditure, what we're looking at is the judge's bench, our elevator, we need to improve our air elevator, um, we've got to be sliding doors for the front of the building, um, courtyard, we have to do some, sorry, gate compliance, um, the scene of highway legends, we could actually, pressure to the back, the zero skating for the courtyard, that's going to be the capital expenditure. Um, second floor, you know, we got to maybe, each year, maybe work on one or two offices, on improving the carpet, painting, and improving each office, so right now, I think we actually have, we have one or two offices this year, to improve that, and then capital expenditure will transfer, FAB to cover the airport, that's what's included in this. Fields, since we see the additional funds, we are going to transfer, um, money from field to general fund, to help cover the A check, transfer to capital expenditure for the courthouse projects, transfer to airport for the 7210, and others, for those projects, and we transfer a million dollars to, to, we're going to, we're going to do, to help with these road tanks, and this is doing. So, did I miss anything that you reviewed in each of these budgets that you wanted to discuss, Mike?
I, I did see, I mean, chairman, the treasurer's office needing any additional staffing at this point, with the channels coming, if it passes, that that would be discussed.
She, when she came before, before budget, she would ask for one or two employees, but after speaking to Jody, Jody did a little call in today, but I did not, like I said, that's why I gave Jody...
So, it'd be the part-time?
The part-time, just in case, I'm saying, not because of the B J's, but I think the treasurer's asking for, and a number of employees, I thought, Jody can be in charge of employee, if actually the employees can employ people into the treasurer's and help out during, the treasurer's using time. So, I, I thought that was the best, do you think there was another option?
As long as our elected officials were okay with that, and, and we really can't afford a full FTE, especially with the doubt decline of 97,000 dollars, so, uh, whatever they plan on that property taxes.
I can talk to both, both elected officials, and, you know, see that she gave the question, the treasurer gave the question, one or two employees.
I think we have time to, before we finalize our budgets till December, and we'll see if the election brings us, at that time, we can address it.
This is just a suggestion, just trying to put it out, because we still need to, um, negotiate with the union, with the request, under the name, because then we also need to see what the final result is, to see where we're going to go with that.
The, the National Association of Counties worked pretty hard on the one-time built payment, uh, and I have kind of hearing a little bit of a chatter, that maybe could happen again in 2024, uh, if we, if we received, uh, one extra additional, might, might not be, we, we, that?
To county?
The, the one payment that we received from built?
Oh, yes. I see, so we received two additional payments for yields, for, for 2023, uh, 2022 and 2023, we received, you know, I'm saying, 986,000 this year?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I'm hearing at the, at the national level, that would pass, that could be, I'm hearing, I think that could be...
No, I don't know about that, no, that'd be wonderful, if they, if they wanted to give us another 900,000, I think we'll take that.
One last question, that this is a matter of age, as you're asking, are the nursing men in the office, have we, had some discussion with that office a week last year?
I apologize for missing that piece, we did, within both of these budgets, we did, um, take into 30 hours, uh, for, for that, for that position, we did, I'm saying, that is one, I'm sorry about that, I gave that on notice.
And if I can turn me in during our discussions with you, we've seen, and we thought, once everything's in place, you can get rid of the, the options, because we, we did give around the idea of, before, we thought, for this part, it's a price, once it needs things planned.
Yes.
I went to Hazard's and the fire, and we had, and it's crucial, we have the office staffed to that, tomorrow, it's time to do the...
He could also ask for, um, just for a cash match, because I think he's trying to look for grants, and so I did budget 10,000 for a cash match, if you can come across a grant, so that is also included in both, both budgets, okay? And you can see the differences, build at fund balance, in one, one, our fund balance is more upon if it actually passes, because we have some balance to come in, and... In one, one, our fund balance is using more on if it actually passes because we have some balance to cover that 92,000 dollars if it passes.
The, one of the questions, how many years do we depreciate every year?
We depreciate every single year.
Right, 220,000 dollars that becomes a little bit.
It's a little, yes, and it's probably a little bit more by investors by the fair amount, which ends on COVID, which is not here. So like, the minimum improvement that we count is going to be over. So like increase, but right now, that's what it currently has is assets.
And on the side note, we do have an RFQ, we have an operator on at the airport, I think it's a 2003, I believe something like that. Let's see if we get anybody that I'm interested in taking a, a manager for that. And we need to get back and continue to entertain the constable, the, the, the park. The members, if we were, if that's possible to do, I would be, bring a little bit of revenue. Because you know, even the, the precision expenses, the little expense for the government, we're basically going to leave money after nothing.
It has to be, it has to be much too far.
One, one last question, if I may, for, for, on the, I know there's still negotiations, we're working with the union and, and stuff. Has that been addressed across the board, county increases for inflation at this time?
I, I'm working on a spreadsheet to present to commissioners. So we can, you can see those, over here in the formal budget. So I've all had that done, just so you can actually send it, and we can set up a, I mean, new negotiations first because I have that.
Sounds great, thank you.
And if I may, on the Lautre Street program, when you build a most factor, do you have that work here, so I have a C L?
That's a moving bridge. Is anyone with cameras in?
Statutory, and I can't remember what statute it is, but statutory. The road bridge department, public works department, I think that's actually stated in the statute. Is required to have X amount of dollars for Lautre Street program. And we've actually increased that from 15 to 20. We're asking to go to 20, 20, 24, that offsets some of the spreading and also losing that contract, it's spreading up. Did it with that?
I was going to do my other question. So just hold it back and wait until, see what the balance is.
Right, now, I'm sure this, this budget will change. This, we have the final figures, we know exactly if it will change, and once we negotiate.
Thank you for all the work we're conducting, and I think.
We can see where DHS was still awarded the two meals for, for both budgets. Just going to, I said DHS, you know.
That, that's a good point. Do we need a motion to approve the proposed budgets?
Please just the presentation, as long as I present it before the 15.
Let's go to my next, consideration of San Carlos letter of support, Mr. Norrigan.
Commissioner, before you agree consideration is approval of San Carlos there of support. This is for San Carlos junior districts, non-registered trail group, 2023 grant application.
Any questions on that, Commissioner? Motion to approve the San Carlos letter of support. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pies? Yes. Consideration of liquor license renewal for the Narrows, Lico's, or some of the council.
Commissioner, that would be an application.
Any questions or comments from our county clerk's office?
No, sir.
Need application.
I'm sorry?
All the paperwork completed, I thought. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jeremy.
Please.
Mr. Marrow, thank you for waiting so patiently with us today and for being here with us. And I'd just like to thank you for being all these years in business in Los Angeles County. Supporting our tax revenues and everything else, which we, and that, thank you for doing.
Thank you. If we got no other questions, I will entertain a motion for these items. To approve the liquor license renewal for the Narrows.
Second.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pies? Yes. Thank you, Eleanor, great to see you. Uh, nine eight, in consideration of SCAD, Rob Van Der for support, Mr. Norrigan.
Commissioner, before you agree consideration is a letter of support for SCADs, Rob Van, grant application. And also, they also work hand in hand with CCOM to try and do some high speed in the rest of I-25.
Any questions, commissioners, or letter of support? Any more questions or anything in motion?
Motion to approve the SCAD, Rob Van Der's for.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pies? Yes. Section 10, consideration of those paid in the second half of September 2023, the record for the.
Um, cable has September 30, 2023, 201,232. Does that make you step up or down? Uh, do I have to care for any questions on cable?
I just wonder how loud the, Kathy Bill, the microphones were shot and goes online.
Any questions on cable?
No questions.
Um, cable is paid on September 20, 2023, 194,000, 630 dollars in warrants. Within this package, we paid rent for grant 15, that's the last year's grant. And then the airport, we paid a portion of grant 16, that's the giving, giving on the grant 16. Um, let's see. 23,500 for used equipment for Orange Ridge that he purchased in the state of Colorado. And then let's see, Fisher's be grant 10,686. I'm pretty sure I have a lot more invoice coming from THA, and that should finally is the grant officially answered.
Mr. Norrigan, you were shopping in there, glass of equipment? We did, sir. It was a D I A auction, C I R, not a D I A.
We already received 16,001. It was, it was a bad cash match.
Good job.
Any questions, additional questions for the record committee? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the build September 1, the second half of September 2023. Second motion.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pies? Yes, and that brings us to our section there. Second, executive session, the common and direct executive session. C I S 24642 will be confronted with county attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice in specific. Any questions? A, investments, and B, litigation. Do I have a motion to go into the executive session with small results?
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pies? Yes.